Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 2nd Town Council meeting. It's 7:00 PM. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I like to have a moment of silence. We have two folks who passed this week. Michael Baylen, who is the son of Michelle Lynn Mike Baylen, and brother of Gianna Baylen, all of whom are employees of the town of Winthrop. So we send our condolences to the Baylen family. And also Shirley Donovan, the grandmother of Pete Christopher, our counselor. Please follow the rule.
Councillor Ringman here. Councillor Callan present. Councillor Christopher.
Yes.
Councillor Boncory.
Councillor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Beteri.
Yes.
Councillor LaConti.
Present.
President Beckio.
Present. I'd like to take a motion to approve the June 18, 2019 Town Council meeting minutes as circulated.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, the ayes have it. The June 18, 2019 Town Council joint meeting of the Library Trustee meeting minutes as circulated.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, the ayes have it. Public comment. Donna Rata.
Mr. Chairman and Town Council members, I will be out of state on July 15 and unable to make the planning board meeting, but I just wanted to express my concern about the corner. I think our town government is turning relative to involving everyday citizens in the government process. My remarks focus on the recent June 27, 2019 Appeals Board decision about the 20 -- wait, I think my coffee is pouring, is it not? Decision about the yet 20 Cottage Park Road that it's not purely residential aid, but the same property is to a small degree in the Central Business District. It was decided on the 27th that a portion of 20 Cottage Park Road was in the business district. Consequently, there is no need to request a variance for the two-and-a-half-story building restriction if that planned building abuts a residential property. My concerns, aside from the fact that real outreach to abutters neighbors and small business owners did not happen in the 2014 effort to redefine the Central Business District, the following are specific concerns that I have. Number one, neighbors put forth a petition on May 27, 2018, that was never heard or addressed. Concerned about all forthcoming building projects in Winthrop Center, the petition dealt with concerns about height, density, side and rear distances from a residential home, and realistic parking. On January 15, 2019, the council, with the exception of Councillor Boncory, voted to indefinitely postpone the petition. Conclusion, resident petitions seem not to be taken so seriously anymore. Secondly, in October 2018, and again on 1/15/19, the town manager promised to, quote, "reengage with the possibility for repeal or amendment zoning." This has yet to happen, except for the hiring of an outside consultant who'd like to include even more private homes in the Central Business District. Thirdly, finally, the town failed to provide a town official to verify that for the past hundred years, the property of 20 Cottage Park Road has been residential. My husband Tom Riley and our attorney, Jackal Doherty, were the only persons equipped with data to document that 20 Cottage Park Road is zoned as residential aid. Maps from 1939, 1970, 1974, '87, and 2006 were referenced to verify this important fact. These maps were rendered in color by our own internationally known architect illustrator, Frank Costantino. Instead, the Appeals Board dismissed any real map history and allowed a technologically devised PowerPoint presentation by the developer to determine their decision that 20 Cottage Park Road has a very small portion of business zoning on the property. This decision, after all the town map references, building official Alagie's April 19 residence disposition, and then Town Manager Delahanti's January 18 definition that 20 Cottage Park Road was in fact residential aid, the Appeals Board voted otherwise. Suddenly, after 68 years, 20 Cottage Park Road turns into a mixed-use piece of property. Where was any official from the town to present the true map and zoning data at that June 27 Appeals Board meeting? I'm left, and many of our neighbors are left, with a disheartening feeling that, except for voicing our concerns at this public forum section of the meetings, the petitions are useless and not heard. Promises for involvement will not happen, and 100-year zoning documentation means nothing. Who's representing the residents? Is the charter being upheld? I can only faintly trust that true resident inclusion and wisdom as to the far-reaching impact of any development, particularly in Winthrop Center, be part of any prospective building in the town. I thank you for your consideration and this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Donna.
Don, I'm S. Ray Riley, Precinct 5. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Tom?
Thank you, Tom Riley, Precinct 5. I want to go back over the history because I'm really upset at the way this has been handled, not handled, mishandled, and shut aside over the last couple of years. Two years ago, members of our neighborhood started to come up here and voice our concerns over two issues. The zoning that was passed in 2014 with the height restrictions, with the parking requirement that we thought was totally inadequate, with no setbacks from the residential properties. We voiced those concerns, and then we also talked about the map that appeared in the master plan that showed the residential properties being in -- distorted a map, the zoning map, and so that these places were in fact included in the business district. Terry Delahanti heard all of that when he was Town Manager and went out through an exhaustive examination of all of the votes of the town meeting, went through a number of various documents, and made a conclusion that no homes are included in the district. When that happened, I stood up right here and said it would be incumbent on the council to do something definitive to make sure that that's incorporated in some form of document so that it's clear and understandable, so that nobody can come up and find a loophole, and that we know that this is in fact the case. And to do it in a time when there's no developer looking for a project. Do it in advance of that. Do it outside of that, so it's not colored by a dispute with the intentions of the developer. So nothing happened. So in May, we decided we would avail ourselves of the clause in the charter that allows for petitions. I was the charter commissioner that wrote that. We wanted to have a way in which people could come and bring their concerns to the council and have them dealt with. We asked to come up with a discussion of all the points that Donna just mentioned: density, height, setbacks, and parking. Three-quarters of a parking space for a one unit, 1.25 for a two, and a $2,000 buyout of any parking requirement at all per space just didn't seem to make sense to us. We understood that there were limitations for what the council could do for a variety of reasons. I said, "Look, can we just convene some sort of forum, some kind of discussion? Bring in the public, bring in the neighbors." The neighbors feel that they weren't involved in the 2014 decision. Can we do something to try to correct that? I asked that repeatedly, over and over. In October, we're given a promise for a review. That was going to be a committee. In November, the review was going to be the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. In January, there's a request now for funds to fund, to hire a consultant. But who do we hire? We hired the person who drew the map, the misleading, distorted map, in the master plan that began the whole controversy. We go forward in March, the petitions are dismissed using a parliamentary gimmick. But finally, in April, the Planning Board holds a hearing on the matter, and holds a hearing on the developer's petition to build a 1026. Alagie comes up with a ruling that it's not, it is adjacent to a residential district. So now we've had two rulings, two different methodologies, two ways of coming at them, one looking at it legally from every vote of a town meeting in the previous maps, one looking at maps, possible things, and so forth. They both come to the same conclusion. But now we enter our consultant, and our consultant comes in with a bunch of distorted, misleading, that don't represent the zoning maps. I've given you maps, they think you've all got them, that show the zoning, they show it consistently, the shape of the districts and so forth. They've got no record, there's no, there's nothing in this stuff that Farm &amp; Place did. But I'll get back to that in a minute. So the Planning Board goes through what they hear, and on June 10, they make preliminary findings. Their findings, as we expected, were that the homes are not in the business district, and that a map should be drawn to show that. Two weeks later, the Board of Appeals, relying on one of Farm &amp; Place's distortions and being convinced by their attorney, skillfully, I might add, that that was in fact the zoning map, makes a determination that that property, that 20 Cottage Park Road, is not a residential district, it's a business district. I'm just astounded that this hasn't been, that I asked the council to take charge of this on the vote, because I didn't think that unless the council took charge of it, held the hearings, held the meetings, made some decisions and so forth, that things weren't being done. The council has decided to defer that to the administration. That's not working. I think it's time for the council to come up with and live up to its legislative duties, take charge of this issue, and move forward, because we're not going to get anywhere, at current pace, we're not going to get anywhere with this consultant. Consultant referred to people's private homes as obstacle buffers that deter from full development. Because if you can, again, if you draw the map and you don't include them, there's no two-and-a-half-story limit for being adjacent, so developers can play. So his solution, put them in a business district. Don't consider the things there. Just negate the thing that, apparently, the council had some idea that they wanted to minimize the impacts on residents. When they caught one, they came up with two different methods of dimensions, sorry. But there had to be a reason for that. This developer, who's supposed to guide us to a solution, thinks that that's a bad idea, and that you should do everything to thwart that. So I'm fed up. I think it's time for the council to stand up, take charge, do it, because it's not going to happen openly, fairly, honestly, or quickly unless that happens.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jack Dowell, Precinct 3. I've been coming to these meetings for two years. First, I was involved with the project that many people wanted to put on Eagle Side Park, and I think I've proven, to some extent, that you can't put a residential development on a parking lot. I hope that the Town Council uses Alcoa 97 disposition of land to process the use of the property at Eagle Side Park. As far as the Senate, and that's when I became involved with the Senate business issue, after I was told that they're going to put 200 units on Eagle Side Park. I think everybody's seen the rendering of these buildings, 48 feet high, right on the sidewalk on Walden Street, Pauline Street, and Walden Mall Road. I haven't seen it lately, but I certainly saw it at some point. As far as the Senate business issue is concerned, I think there's a small number of people that are practicing group narcissism, bringing in interlopers into the town to basically ruin the character of the town, starting with the center. They come in with a 58-foot development down to 48, we're going back and forth with I've been to, in the last two years, probably 15 seacoast communities in Massachusetts and Manay, New Hampshire. I've studied dimensions, layouts, the width of center is too small an area for 48 feet. If you go to these other places, the streets are 50 feet wide, the shadows won't be cast in the next-door neighbor's windows. The way these centers are laid out is if you're in an establishment, you look out the window and you see blue sky. That's why they laid it out. These are 100-year-old establishments. If the streets are wider, you can get away to the taller building, but not down in width of center. I think this master plan that was proposed in 2014, '17, whenever it's proposed, has changed. The master plan was written so that you'd have business establishments at the center, and you'd have people coming to the businesses that lived in the center at two-and-a-half stories. Now you have a parking garage under, I don't know how many square feet of building, 15,000 square feet. If you give them the right to have a parking garage under the building, the next-door neighbor in his business establishment will want to have a parking garage under his, because he's just seeing that, the next-door neighbor. And then following, so it's a domino effect. And I mentioned this at a planning board meeting, and they said I was out of line. He said I wasn't, the chairman of the planning board said I wasn't talking reality. Well, the reality was the picture that he composed, a building with a parking lot under it. So now you're going to change the center from being a business community to a parking lot. I just don't see where this master plan comes into play at this point. I hope you realize that it's a small group of people using a ordinance rewritten without anybody in the neighborhood attending to help a very small number of developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I just have one question at Blatchton. The appeal last week was of a decision that was made by a town official. It was under appeal. I don't know why there wasn't anybody at that hearing charged with the task of explaining how that decision, what that decision was, and how it was made. There was no defense for it. I spent most of my career working in labor relations. Anytime we had to have a hearing on something, we made sure that the person who made the decision was there, or if they didn't, someone who could explain how and why the decision was made. That didn't happen. And I just, I don't know why, since as a firm decision and a firm ruling on a matter of that importance that was made by a town official, that no one attends to explain or defend it.
Is it general practice that a town official goes to the Board of Appeals?
No, a town official and the council cannot influence any decision made by the Board of Appeals.
Yes.
No town official nor Town Council member is supposed to attend meetings of the Board of Appeals. That is out of line. That is, they're an independent body that is tasked with making appeal decisions. In many communities--
That's not, that's not true. That's not true. That may be, that may be a policy now.
It is--
Well, I, I'm sorry, but I've been part of town government since 1970, and that wasn't the case. Building Inspector always would attend the Board of Appeals hearings, and he would explain why and how he made the decision. He's not there to argue, but he's just there to explain. There wasn't anybody there. The council members are free to attend Board of Appeals hearings. They're not free to interfere with them. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be going to the Building Inspector telling him how he should rule. But they certainly have the right to attend a meeting. That's just business. I still don't understand it, and I really don't accept the answer.
Hi, I'm Jean Kaufman, Precinct 5. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but you can hear the frustration of my neighbors, the Rileys. I think they've summed it up perfectly. I don't understand how I feel. That night at Planning Board, after all the time and effort of three years begging and asking and going to not only Town Council, but Planning Board, many nights on my own, many nights that they canceled it, and I sat there alone asking, "Please watch out for the residents. Please watch out for the town. Please be careful what you let happen, because you're going to set a precedent, and then all hell's going to break loose. Well, that's what's going to happen now." We were at a meeting that we were just dismissed, disregarded. They talk, blah, 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 blah. Mr. Sipletter, you know, very good job by him, very calculating, precise PowerPoints with overlays, and kind of dropped into, and you can perceive them any way you want. And if any of you were at that meeting, you'd be confused, as we were. What's her rear? What's her side? She has four sides and a one rear setback that she put back to, right on top of 20 Cottage Park Road. She went back with a setback behind, like where Kids Only is, and behind East Boston Savings Bank, which to me makes no sense. Why wouldn't you have given the relief or the variance and not been on top of somebody with gas meters? You know, put that, reverse that. But she counted four sides and was very calculating the way they positioned it and dropped it into place to get their answer. He said to them, "Can we reopen? We don't think we're going to have to need a variance after you see our beautiful PowerPoint presentation." Well, we saw it, and there were four different things with, as Joanna said, very fuzzy lines, but you can see that they dropped in place with partial areas of people's homes, so I guess if they did it to her, they'll do it to me next. I'll be one of those, I forget what Mr. Riley called it, a butters--
A convenient buffer.
A convenient butter, a buffer, I'm a convenient buffer. That's what I am, after paying residential real estate taxes. And I know for a fact that 20 Cottage Park Road, they've been there, they were there a very long time. She, her father and mother were there way before her, and to hear the news that they're business zoned, after all the times we've been coming and asking, it was just sort of like we were just dismissed, that's our answer, you know, goodbye, get out. And that's really, basically, how we felt that night. So you can hear my frustration, how upsetting it was to be treated like that after, you know, we're pretty good people, all of us, and we try to do the right thing here, and to just see the way it was calculated and put, so that, no, she didn't need a variance. She cut back on her parking spaces by seven, that's what she did do. She didn't change the thing, she's still three feet away from the girls' driveway. And she's going four stories without a variance, and she's going to pay $14,000 for the parking spaces that you allowed her to do with the 2014 ordinances, and she's happy to do it. You might have already got a check from her. But that's the way I see it. I just feel like we were dismissed, disregarded, and just pushed by the wayside. We didn't matter. We really didn't matter that night. Their decision was made, it was clear, and they were there to get the job done that night, and that's what they did, all for the developer, not for any of the residents. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Nick Steele, Precinct 5. We've been coming to meetings for three years, and there was no compromise here. The same thing we said three years ago took place the last couple of meetings. Looking back at everything and the way everything took place, there should have been a lot more input by the neighbors. As Mrs. Kaufman said, developers got every single thing they asked for. And to me, Mr. Dowell, on April 3, 2018, stood up at Mr. Beckio's forum that he ran and questioned the $2,000 parking spot that a developer can buy and a resident can't. And Mr. Dowell asked that that could be taken off the books immediately. And there were many other things that transpired. I hope at this time that the council does invest some money in some impact study to see what's going to happen here. I also like the council to also invest some money, because it seems like we're investing $30,000 to look at different things that have happened. I'd like the council to look at and have a professional come in and look at what is maximum density. What is maximum density? We are, obviously, all of us, we're pro, we were pro-development the whole time, we just felt that, you know, we should have been part of the process. And unfortunately, we were not, going all the way back to 2014. And I hope that there is some input in the future, otherwise you're going to have what everybody else has been saying, you're going to have runaway development. You've opened up Pandora's box for development. The only thing the public has left is hope. The council will be judged in the court of public opinion. That's what will happen here. I've been involved in town politics, town government, different things throughout the years. I remember when we switched our form of government, there was a person that came from Watertown, and she was adamant that we had a great form of government, and we had our town meeting. I just hope that the developers are responsible. I hope that, because right now it looks like, you know, the whole center is not going to be the center that we thought we were going to get, you know? The developer wanted 30 units, she got 30 units. We wanted less. The developers are going to come in, and they're going to develop, and I don't know what kind of developments are going to go up, but I'll tell you one thing. This will go against your charter right here, and the developments will not be compatible with community character, 17.5. It will not be developments that will be compatible. I hope the developers have some type of sympathetic understanding for the neighbors and the residents. We're not big businesses, you know, we don't have the monetary means to take this to any other level. And I hope that the council acts as agents of the public, and act in an ethical, responsible manner for their constituents.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Just responding to all of those comments. Sure. Couple things. On Donna's first comment on the January 15, three of us did recuse ourselves and did not vote to delay the petition to, you know, Councillor Boncory voted no, and three of us recused ourselves because of our situation, so we didn't vote to postpone, to indefinitely postpone the petition. So I just want to make that clear. And I will say to Tom, and I would have thought differently before today, because I read the charter more today, I think it does state in the charter that the council, I'm not speaking for the department head or anything, but I know the Town Council personally is not supposed to, I think we're entitled to go to meetings. I don't think we're entitled to sway our opinions in any way, shape, or form towards the Appeals Board. I do think, however, though, in Section 2.7, that the Town Council does have the authority, I believe, to ask that the Board of Appeals comes before us to explain their decision. So we do have that authority, which I would like to ask later in new business.
Thanks, Ben. I'll follow up on that point.
Sure.
So, under Chapter 40A, which is zoning, under Mass General Law, Section 17, it's the next step that any person who feels aggrieved by the decision of an Appeals Board, it's the judicial review step. You take the decision to court, and that is still open. In this case, there was a Planning Board decision, which the Board of Appeals made a different decision on, and now if people would like to appeal it, just like the developer had the ability to appeal the decision of the Planning Board, it can be appealed to court.
But we can't ask the Board of Appeals to explain to us.
You can ask them to explain in a public forum, but you can't, they, the decision would be--
I'm not saying the decision is going to change--
Yeah, you can request that.
So we could request. My other concern is, and I did ask in January at that meeting and subsequently, that we vote on this, not that it's going to change anything now, but we vote on this Center Business District, on the zoning map. And we have motion comes before us all the time for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and at the last minute, there were emergencies, we have to pass them, we have another chance to go over them, but we pass them. It's been four months. I don't see why a six-year-old kid could go down there and draw a map, and then we could decide.
It's in front of the Planning Board.
It's been in front of the Planning Board for three months, Mr. Town Manager, and I think that's adequate time, more than adequate time. It's been three years.
The Planning Board is working with a consultant to develop a map. They are--
It doesn't take rocket, my opinion is it doesn't take a rocket scientist to go down there. It doesn't, that doesn't mean that we're going to approve that map-- there. It doesn't, that doesn't mean that we're gonna approve that map. We can make adjustments, but get a map before us is what I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. Please let me speak. I also would like to have a clearer definition of what mixed use is. Because I believe, my intention, my thought was it was commercial on the first floor and residential above, not 25% commercial, 75% parking and then, so I would like a clearer definition going forward. I don't know, I'm not saying this is, well, it's a bad decision, a good decision, whatever. But I think it's very misinforming to the public and to me as a counselor, because I thought there could have been compromise made in a lot of areas. And I would like to just get clearer definitions. I'm not saying anything about the Board of Appeals. But I would like to get a clearer definition. I'm not sure who we go to for that, of what mixed use really is. I would like to get an answer as to when we can expect a map in front of us to vote on.
It is my, on my side, I believe the planning board is voting on it at the next meeting.
Yes, yeah, we're supposed to be voting on it. So it'll be in front of us, the August 13th, in our meeting.
That will be new business, so we wouldn't be voting on it that night, correct?
Yeah, it'll just be, yeah, you refer.
If there's one, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I can understand the frustrations. I really can. Because it seems like, and I'm not saying the decision would have been any different if we had made a map and made it residential, that the Board of Appeals still had the right to give them a variance and every right to do that. But I just think it would be a lot better if we had clearer definitions of what we were actually doing and to try to take the people's word and to try to work with them. But that's all I had on that.
So, just to circle back on the developer, this was actually the third version of this project. The initial version did include more commercial on the first floor, which they changed that and included more parking based off of public feedback. Then the second version of it had no commercial on the first floor when it was talked about during site plan review in the fall. And I pushed back saying, "I don't want just, I don't want parking only on the first floor. This is a business district. I would like some continuity to our business." So then they carved out spots and put commercial back in there. So there was a version of this that included significantly less parking. And based off comments that they received, they shifted towards additional parking there because there is a idea in the area that there is a necessity for additional parking with any project. So they took that to heart and included additional parking. So now...
The first version had no parking at all.
Yeah, so we're, we've given them differing viewpoints.
I think originally they would have liked to have parking on the ground, but it wasn't economically feasible. And I do understand that parking is needed. My concern is, you know, their attorney stated that these are units that, they're marketing them to people that don't use parking. Why can't we use something like other cities and towns do and don't offer residential sticker to a person living in the unit? Therefore, not requiring the parking at all would alleviate the problems and concerns of the residents and gives us more of a commercial base.
That's a good idea. I would be more than happy to pursue that, as I've referred to previously.
No, and I know I talked to you about it before.
And in the fall, my intention, as a person who's run the traffic and parking department previously, and I know how parking is basically a sunk cost. It is something that takes up space and is used for less than 50% of the day, depending on where the spot is. I would like to see less parking, full stop. I wish the site plan review that we saw in the fall included no parking in it.
Well, just for clarity, I'm not saying no, I'm saying no parking with no residential sticker. I'm not saying no parking and bring cars to park on the street.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying no...
I'm saying I would rather have, because I think the developer would have been, economically, it's way better for her to, instead of spending money on the parking space.
I'm saying no parking. We will never solve any of our traffic issues if we continue to build parking for additional cars until we force people to make the decision to live in town if they want to live without a car, which I personally have made that decision previously, or they have to potentially live somewhere else where they can get parking. If that's the decision they have to make, instead of entertaining this idea that, well, we need them to have parking, yet we don't wanna address our traffic issues going into town, I see it every morning when I come into town. I would like to reduce that. And I am working on mode shifts in terms of every possible avenue with this town so that we can try to reduce the number of cars on the road coming out of town. Because the majority of people who work in this town do not work in Winthrop. They work in other municipalities. So I'm trying to alleviate the number of cars that we have on the road because that's the only way we will solve some of the traffic issues around here every morning.
Any other councilor? Pete?
Sure. So I just, I know that there's a lot of concerns that people have, and I share a lot of the same concerns. I've been right there with you throughout the beginning. And, you know, we did get two rulings from the town that I think were in line with what a lot of people, and a lot of people have been looking at and have been, it was aligned with what they thought. I wanna talk a little bit about, you know, some people have said, "Why don't you just go down and start drawing lines all over the place?" And I have a real issue with going, acting quickly, putting the cot before the horse and just drawing these lines just for the sake of getting them on the map. Because I heard from everybody two years ago when people just thought that that was done to them. When people just thought that the master plan was a binding document and they said, "Jeez, there's all these lines that have been drawn all around my houses," and that was a major problem. And I think that there is consensus on the, from the town's point of view, as far as where we think those lines should be, in that one corner of the Center Business District. But the fact of the matter is, is that the Center Business District stretches all the way from the bottom of Cottage Park Road in Somerset and goes all the way up to Pauline Street. It affects people on Somerset Ave, on Putnam's Ave, Jefferson Ave. It's a huge parcel of land. And to just go, I don't feel comfortable saying, "I'm gonna make a, you know, the nine of us just go out there and draw a map." I think that that's something that requires a lot more thought and a lot more time. And that's why I think that we need to take a few meetings with the planning board and sort of hash this out. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is the issue of procedure. I think that this has been a crazy procedure. We have seen, the planning board had it at one point. We had two board, two meetings with the Board of Appeals, site plan review. I don't even, I don't even really know where it's gonna stand at this point because the plan's essentially changed. There's, there were really, there's a lot of, at least to me, and I follow this pretty closely, I have a lot of questions about the procedural matters on how a project like this goes through the towns, the, what, how, where we are in the pipeline on a lot of these things. That can be addressed with, with the process, with the process that we're using right now. Not only are we gonna be doing, redrawing the lines once we have consensus on that, but we're also gonna be taking, looking at the different, I hope we will look at the different avenues that we can take to expedite this and give the public some more clarity about, about how these projects get approved. And finally, I think Jim made a very good point just now about adding, you know, some restrictions. I know that the Economic Development Committee two years ago came forward with recommendations about parking in the Center Business District. We wrote a big memo. We met with Mike DeLuiso and we had, at least the three of us had some consensus on that. I know that that's gonna be difficult with the infrastructure project, but I think that those project, those type, that type of policy is one that we should be moving forward on. Parking benefit districts, those types of ideas are things that we wanted to incorporate. I think that that might be a little bit out of the scope of what we, what we're talking about on this particular project, but that now is the time to start talking about it. You know, because the, what the Board of Appeals does is retrospective. They're looking backwards on things that have already happened. Where right now, we're talking about policy moving forward prospectively. That's what this board does. And that's what the things that we should be talking about, like Jim just said. And there's a lot of ideas out there. This is the time to bring those forward. But I hear everybody's concerns and I've been right there with you since the beginning. And I, I think what we need to do now is to look out, look forward to the next project and see how we can do that. How we can best make the neighborhood everyone's comments inclusive and whatnot. But that's kind of what I wanted to say. And I'll say more about this once this comes before. I have a really long notebook and stuff that I'm gonna bring up all these different ideas. But, but for now, those are the things I think we should be talking about. Thank you.
Any other councils that could be heard?
I know that, I share your frustrations and I understand where you're coming from. This whole process has been, I don't wanna use the word haphazard, but it's been clumsy from day one. And, you know, coming on board in a new council like this council, the new council's been together about a year and a half. And, you know, we were, we inherited a lot. And certainly the, you know, the actions that were taken in 2014, a lot of folks feel that they weren't part of the process and I can totally understand the frustrations. What I would like to commit to, and I think several of the councillors here agree, is to have the appeals board come in, explain the reasons for, for what decision that they made. But at the same time, I think we should actually analyze each element of this whole process to make sure that we did it correctly. I've always been the type of person that wants to follow the process as it's supposed to materialize when it comes to a project in the community. And usually the projects, the process is, is meant to protect the residents and the folks that are bringing the project forward. Whether we follow that 100% is in question. But I'm committed to review the whole process and certainly have the appeals board in to get, you know, get an explanation of why they ruled the way they did. I also would like to get the other half of the coin with, with the building department to see why they, who made the decision of the, you know, the commissioner, the way he did. So with that, I'll just make one, you can make one more comment unless there's a council that would like to speak.
Yeah, I'll say something. Now that I caught up to what you guys are talking about.
Well, if you were here on time, you wouldn't...
If I was, I really tried to fly in on time.
Yeah, you have car trouble?
Yeah, I did. But, you know, we, the process has always been the same, that they come to the building inspector and they file an idea. Then we passed the bylaw quite some time ago, and I was on the council, I know Jim was, and Linda, and we passed the site review committee, put out a whole plan for them so that anybody had to come. Once they met the building inspector, had to go to the site review committee, and we put the people on that committee that we thought would be the sharpest people to help, you know, the citizens. Because in that site review committee, we said that anything that was built had to conform. And, you know, it's still there, that it has to conform. Then from there, it went to the planning board. It should go to the planning board and then maybe to the appeals board. But we also put in the Center Business District back in 14. And we had numerous hearings about that, whether people believed we had them or not. There were numerous hearings, both with MAPC and then with the Rules and Orders Committee had meetings on it, and then the council had meetings on it because we had to. We had to follow the open meeting law. We had to have public hearings on each of the bylaws that were passed, as they were passed. I don't know what the appeals board is doing now and what the delay is in getting a map to us. But I think anybody that has an idea if they wanna change those bylaws that were passed, both either the site review committee or the Center Business District, gotta come forward and say, "This is what we'd like." And then we can change that bylaw. But until that's done, the bylaw that we have in front of us is what they have to follow. And hopefully, they're following it. And, you know, I agree that no residential houses should be in the Center Business District. So the lines should be drawn around those houses no matter what. But the bylaws that are there are there. They were passed, they were passed after public hearings. They were passed after review by all of the councillors that were here at the time. So, you know, I'm sorry if it's not working, but it should be working. And I don't know why it's not working. But we need to get something done quickly, whether it's in development, the shovel in the ground, the, the maps. We need to get something done quickly.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard in the council? Jack, I'll let you have one quick, just a quick one.
Thirty seconds. Thank you very much. Phil, I think you should resign.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't think you should run again. There's gonna be a big changeover in this council. And I think it would be better for the town and for the council, for the chairman or the president of the council, Mr. Warner Curry, not to run again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Tom?
I just wanna say a quick thing about this. First of all, we did thought, think about changing the things. That's why we submitted a petition last May to ask for, have to have a discussion on amending the zoning law. So we did that and we didn't get any result. But you're the one that did, voted not to. So I shouldn't be pointing my remarks towards you, but I just wanna say, we did, we did avail ourselves of an open petition and it didn't work. We didn't get the discussion we wanted. We didn't get the examination we wanted. We didn't get any forums. On the planning board, let me, they were asked three months ago to do something. I have no criticism of what the planning board did. I just think the planning board should have been asked more than a year earlier than they were to do this. I think we knew it was needed at that time. There should have been some action then. But the planning board received a request. They also received a consultant. The consultant gave them a set of things. I held them up here in a meeting and I told you what I thought of them. That's how they started off. They had to work through all of this nonsense, distorted stuff and so forth. They finally were able to figure it out and sat down here. They've made some preliminary findings. They've asked the assistant town manager to help them in coming back or something. They're a volunteer board. They meet once a month. They've, I think they've been pretty diligent in trying to get to where they wanted to go. I just wish they had been asked to do it a year earlier.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yep. We've elected you officials. You represent the community at large. We entrust that you will take the strong and stronger actions to ensure the fact that this community remains, for the most part, as she was, a small seaside bedroom community that offered a great deal in the way of people's skills, in the way of businesses, small businesses, okay? And this idea that all of a sudden, if you change the Center Business District and these poor five residents are all thrown in there, all of a sudden, you're gonna have this flood of influx of businesses and they're all gonna come and they're gonna live here and they're gonna eat here and they're gonna work here. This is not Winthrop. And you, each and every one of you know that. You have a notice of responsibility to us because we put you in office. And we're asking you to take the due diligence. We're asking you to really seriously consider, each and every time, decisions have to be made. So that you lay the groundwork now because Winthrop is a very, very hungry, vital community. And you've got other developers that are gonna be looking at properties. And if they see, and I don't mean to be unkind, if they see a weak council and they see boards, and I attended many of the planning boards, wherein the planning board chairman made the statement, "We're not sure of how to handle this." This is not what you appointed these people for. Yes, they're volunteers and yes, they're knowledgeable and yes, they do meet. You people have to form a collaborative. You have to have a group here and a group there. You have to come together on behalf of the community.
Any further comment? Hearing none. Correspondents, we've had several. Allison Casey Dwyer sent us an email regarding ferry. Mike Demento concerning the Ingleside flooding. And John Battagliano was making comments about the line bike and the parking and the fact that they were blocking the sidewalks. Committee reports, finance, Jim, you wanna defer to...
We could go to new business. On old business, we'll take that up.
Okay. Town managers report.
Sure. Thank you very much. So to begin, there'll be holiday hours this week due to the Fourth of July holiday. The offices will close at noon tomorrow and reopen at 8:00 AM on Monday, July 8th. Only non-transactional business will be conducted in the Treasurer Tax Office on Wednesday, July 3rd. That is due to the funeral services of the individual that we did a moment of silence for earlier. And as a reminder, e-payments can, electronic payments can be made by visiting the town website. Additionally, the council president and I had the opportunity to tour Cofflin Park and the new Living Shoreline on Friday. We met with Coastal Zone Management, the Nature Conservancy and other individual, and the speaker was there and some other individuals from the state. They explained to us the uniqueness of the project and how this project has longer standing, potential impacts for the town, rather than building a physical barrier. Physical barriers break down over 30 years, whereas this is intended to be a shoreline that is there and sustainable for longer than 30 years. I have additional information here, but what's coming next is eventually, once it's built, it's grown up enough, those fences will be taken down. We are gonna be offering signage that both instructs people how to potentially interact with some of the plantings there, but also what the plantings are doing and how the park was designed. Because this is a newer design. There's coconut beams... There's coconut beams underneath it. There's all these different stones that are used to dissipate the energy of waves. The intention is if a wave comes, it does not come up that park and go right around the corner like it did last year in 2018. Done with physics involved and things like that, way more complicated than I can even explain. But we hope that this is a project that we can actually show to other communities about how there's a potentially different way than just building physical seawalls of interacting with the ocean and protecting the community as well. So that was great to see, and it's looking nice already, and it's only going to look better as it grows up more. The fireworks are scheduled to begin at 9:20 p.m. on Thursday. And then concerning the ferry, I wanted to give an update on that, and then if you want to chime in, Ron, I don't have a problem with that. So previously, we had a issue with staffing concerning the captains. We had some issues come up, and that's why we dropped service over five days, over a two-week period. And then last Wednesday, I believe it was, we had the engine overheated, one of the engines overheated in the boat. We, essentially, a cylinder melted, it looks like. So now, we are in the position that it's going to be a lengthy repair period. And I am working hard concurrently to find some type of entity or boat that we can use to uphold our commitment to our community locally and also the people in Quincy that rely on the ferry. So it is not a great situation, and we are working hard to rectify it. It speaks to some of my personal concerns with a municipality running a ferry and a transportation system on our own. But we are trying our best to try to accommodate the constituents that utilize the ferry, because that really is what needs to be done at this point in time. But we are also exploring any and all options concerning the ferry at this point.
The town manager has been working very hard to try to come up with an alternative, but at the same time, the goal was always not to be in the ferry business. We want a ferry, but we don't want to operate it. And for this very reason, we had a personnel problem two weeks ago, now we have a technical problem. And that's the worst thing that can happen when it comes to transportation. Joe IEL will tell you, it's all about repetition, repetition. The buses always have to be there. Sometime the people are not there, sometime the bus is late, but there always has to be repetition. And we just got to a point in the last year and a half where the service was in the black. He's been seeking solutions relative to another company coming in. Now, we're actually approaching the MBTA to see if we can go on a pilot program. They just announced a program about a week ago that we're going to apply for. Whether it happens or not, I don't know. My vision has always been for a person with a Charlie card to drive down to the public landing, get on the ferry. And the more traffic that everybody has been in leaving Winthrop, it's getting worse and worse. You drive on Route 16. My wife works up in Burlington. She leaves in the morning at 6:00. I don't see her till 5:30 at night, because the traffic is everywhere. It's not just Saratoga Street or Main Street. It's everywhere. Route 16 in Everett, Somerville, 128, 128 on Sunday, all day, is bumper to bumper. So that's why you look at alternative transportation. And I firmly believe it is the seashore community that a ferry is needed. And it's been proven. I mean, I've been answering emails from folks that take the ferry every day, that commute. What are you doing to me? It was wonderful. I just get on the ferry and I go over, and now I get to go in the traffic or take the tea. So we're working on it. All we can do is apologize, but we hope to have something resolved shortly. That's all I'm saying there.
I have one additional item to. Lastly, I have my town manager's committee report and recommendations concerning the center business district project, the infrastructure project. I believe that was submitted to you all, correct? So you all have copies of it. We will make it public on the website as well. It details the finding, the peer review, the all-in project, all of the nature of all of these discussions that we had concerning some of the conditions that were brought forth by Councilor Angman when we voted on the financing of the project. All of those are dealt with in this report, and we are at the position that we can put this work out to bid next week. It will be on the central register. So looking like a construction season starting as early as possible in calendar 20. Even if we pushed it right now, we would be looking at most likely late September that we could get in the ground. And instead, we want to do the right process that I've always been committed to with it in terms of talking with the public, talking about the phasing of it, making sure that everyone knows the potential impacts that are coming with this project as early as possible. And then we will continue to reiterate these messages as much as we need to, and we will try as much as possible to have the public interact with some of like the visioning documents and things like that of how it's going to look in different phases and what people can expect, because that is something that was also part of the conditions, and my office is completely committed to that. So it's a quite extensive report that covers months of work, but the committee did a good job, and I appreciate the work that they did.
Could you expand upon the future project on Ingleside Park? Every time we have a rainstorm.
Sure.
You know, people talk about, when is it going to change? When is it going to change?
Absolutely. So as part of the environmental bond bill that was passed in 2018 at the state, Winthrop was potentially allocated approximately $15 million to utilize on a series of projects. The initial projects that were talked about then were a solution for Ingleside Park, Morton Street, and Pico. Right now, the first project that we have in front of us is the Ingleside project. It's at 30% design right now. It is a combination of, I believe it's a million-gallon storage tank underneath Ingleside Park, and a smaller pump to move water along as well. It, we have, so we're at the point now that I wrote a letter on behalf of my office to the secretary of EEOA concerning the project and inquiring how we can start drawing down on the environmental bond bill money so that we can continue design work on this project and get through some of the permitting, because from what I've been told by our engineering firm, it looks like the permitting for a project like that is at least six months, up to a year. So we still have a fair amount of work to do on it, but we are at the point that we can try to start getting some money for it and start thinking what the timeline is actually going to be on a project like that. So I hear people on it. I get constituents' emails about it frequently, and I am trying hard to get a solution in place. This is a large, multimillion, over $10 million project that we're looking at to do the solution, but the intent is to alleviate all of the flooding associated with that area. And in conjunction with the center business district infrastructure work and the infrastructure work that will be needed under the middle school site, we will be looking at a completely different system there that can actually deal with the amount of water that's in that area, even in major 100-year storm-type events. So it's a series of dominos, like I talked about in the fall, concerning the center business district and the center business district being the first domino, but we're at the point that we can start getting some of these other things in motion. And as I've said multiple times to you, my intent is to put out an RFP for the middle school this fall. We are still in the process of doing the title research. I agree with Mr. Dowd concerning the potential issues with Article 97. It seems like from my very layman's understanding of it that we may potentially have an issue with where the hockey rink is located and also the gymnasium. When those were built, I'm still trying to research if there was actually a correct land swap that was done for Article 97, if that was in fact parkland previously, that little part of that parcel. So that is what is taking long with this process, is doing our due diligence with it, because I don't want to put it out to bid when people can't actually do anything on the property. And we are also still, we did an internal inventory, and we're actually bringing in, it's called, I believe, Dove USA. They do surplus equipment and things like that. They're going to come in and physically inspect all of the assets that we have inside the building as well to get them on surplus lists and get the building cleared out. So that whole, like I said, center business district through Ingleside, we're trying to attend to all of it concurrently to kind of get us moving on some of these things, so people don't have to deal with the major issues that are present right now.
Questions from the councils? Nick?
Council president, thank you. Town manager, I'd like to circle back to Coughlin Park.
Sure.
So with all the activity that's going to be happening down there this week, I was assured that that shoreline restoration project would be completed by June 30th.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering how much longer the temporary fencing is going to be up.
So the fencing needs to stay up past the 4th. It is...
I did ask him to move it, though.
Yeah, yeah, we did ask him to move it.
I asked him to move it so that the chairs and all the tables would be available for, you know, for the...
By our feeling?
So, and we've gotten a response on that, is that in the, so those fences have fallen down previously due to wind, and if they fall down, we don't want it to fall onto the living shoreline. We would rather them fall onto the tables, was actually the response that I got. So unless, I, it is very short notice, but we could potentially move the fences a little bit more, but I don't want, again, I don't want to ruin stuff that just was years of work in the making. And if you, I actually have all the background information on the project as well, if you want some of that. But the project is essentially done. Now, it just needs to grow a little bit. We need the natural process to take place in terms of the beach grass and the plantings that are kind of won in from the beach grass. It's these bushes, I can't say exactly which bushes they are, but they need to grow a little bit more. And I think they're just a little reticent to take down the fencing, because it is an attractive area, and it will be an area that when those fences are down, that people are playing in very close proximity to that. And we just don't want to ruin the investment that's already been made in it.
Understandable. Coughlin Park is such prime real estate on the Fourth of July. Any sort of temporary moving you could do to maximize would be appreciated.
Understood.
And if that's sort of in the short term, in the more medium term, when will the temporary fencing be able to come down?
That's a good question. I can inquire on that and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's up in my head.
Thank you.
Allison? Just a quick, in Coughlin Park, everybody gets there after the parade, and they usually have the national anthem and so on. Couple of years, there was no flag up there. Would you just be sure someone puts the flag up that morning?
Okay. I think there was a flag there. Jimmy?
Three quick things. On the back of ferry a little bit, I'm sure that you've been in contract with our contractual obligations. We're okay with that. No issues? Payments will be okay adjusted or how is that working?
To my knowledge, yeah. We are, they are trying to be as accommodating as possible, both Mastod and Quincy, on what we are signed up to provide in terms of service.
Okay. And can, I also would like to ask, for years, we've had department heads here, public safety, DPW, fire, and police, and I have found it extremely beneficial to us and to the public, and I would like to ask that that return. So that's my second point. And my third is, historically, we've had the town manager call Mastod the week before, the week of the 4th, just to fear, just to make them cognizant of our firework display and if there's any changes that they had to make in terms of flight paths or whatever.
Yeah.
But if we, if you can do that, that would be great.
We have been in contact. We've been in contact with the Coast Guard. The company that is actually providing the fireworks pulled all the permits as well. So we have been hard at work to make sure everyone knows that we're shooting fireworks off at 9:20 p.m. And hopefully, the weather block fits as well.
Thank you.
Council president?
Just, I think it was Saturday, we had all that torrential downpours and the flooding. And it behooves me to say that each area that's flooding is ongoing. In front of the Elks, it's been going on. Ingleside Park now, it's been going on. Sturgis Street, it's been going on. Bottom of Watertower Hill, it's been going on. It's getting worse. We're not getting any progress. We're not getting any results. And it's, you know, it's almost three years that these issues have been going on, and we don't see any improvement. I hope there's some kind of a plan that can have some temporary alleviation of some of this, you know...
So there is no temporary...
Oh, and by the high school.
There is no temporary alleviation. It's doing the infrastructure work. That's what's necessary. So that's why...
All those areas were done.
They, I, okay. In terms of Ingleside...
Well, not Ingleside.
And everything that's necessary around here, we're talking tens of millions of dollars. And we also have a 100-year-old infrastructure, which we've discussed on multiple occasions, that we need to work hard to work all around town. We're making basically decisions on a case-by-case basis of what to do with our limited resources. So this project for Ingleside is over $10 million. The center business district is about $14 million. We're investing a fair amount of money in terms of taking care of the flooding.
We just did the high school, and, you know, that whole area down there was underwater.
I, we, this town is in a very unique location as well, and we are doing our best. The ocean is not going anywhere, and we are trying our best to do this. This is something that is not unique to Winthrop. There's flooding up and down the coast because of the failing infrastructure that's in place in most communities. I dealt with multiple feet of flooding when I was in Somerville with a microburst. It actually ruined our police station. I mean, this is something that's happening with every community, and from my mind, it's because many communities did not really ready themselves for the impacts of climate change. And this is happening to us now, and it's only going to continue happening. So we need to be spending as much money as possible to alleviate this.
The, another question, and I'm not around the town as much as I used to be during the day. Are they cleaning catch basins? Is there an ongoing program? You know, they, we used to see them all the time. I mean, I...
They absolutely are cleaning catch basins.
And concentrating on those low-lying areas that...
Absolutely. And they're, I mean, our DPW department is, in my mind, doing a commendable job with the limited resources that they have.
Could we get a schedule of maybe for one of our meetings and when certain areas have been done?
Sure. I can inquire about that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Manager? There's no school department update, because there was no meeting. The road business. We do have a vacancy on the council that was made available by the resignation of the council making Sirdow. We've had it out there publicly for the last two and a half weeks. At the last meeting, we announced that we would take it up at this session. Right now, we've only received one individual that is inquired about being appointed. So I'll open it up to the discussion with the council.
Goodie President, I would take this opportunity to place a nomination in the name of Robert Demarcio for the office of North of Town Councilor at Large. Mr. Demarcio's a bright young man. He's here in the audience. He ran for this office. He got over 43% of the votes. There were 17,000 to 2,000 people that voted for him to get that position, and it's on the right that he is given that position by us councilors.
A second. Then seconded. Any discussion on the nomination? Are there any other nominations before we close?
I'd say it three times, I think.
Have to say it three times?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear any other nominations? That's two. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none?
Motion to close nominations.
A motion to make to close nominations. Been seconded. Okay. All in favor? You want to take a roll call?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilor Angman?
Yes.
Councilor Cowell?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Boncory?
Rob Demarcio.
Councilor Marino?
Yes.
Councilor Wakati?
Yes, Rob Demarcio.
Vice President Wettary?
Rob Demarcio.
President Beckia?
Rob Demarcio.
Congratulations, Rob Demarcio.
Congratulations, Rob. Make sure you go to the clerk's office.
You're going to regret it.
Would you like to say something, Rob?
I just thank you very much for your support, and am I allowed to come up and shake hands?
Sure. Do whatever you want. Make sure you go to the clerk's office tomorrow.
Congratulations, Rob.
To get sworn in.
Get sworn in, so we'll be with us in August.
I'm already breaking stuff.
Tell me, Phil.
You're going to get me to be exact.
That's one day. You know I'm great.
There you go. I think you can put that together.
Somebody asked you to resign.
He's resigning anyway. He's resigning anyway.
Congratulations, Bobby.
You need to walk on the knocker.
Okay, under new business, I refer to Chair Finance.
The Finance Committee met earlier this evening, there are two items on the agenda which were both put forward with positive recommendation. I'll make the first motion that the town council vote to transfer $16,900 from Salary Reserve to Department Budget and Enterprise Funds as needed.
Any discussion?
No, wait, wait a second. No, that's the wrong motion, that's the wrong motion. Yeah, I know, but there's the, that's a different motion. Do you have the motion, Anna?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the 16,900 for the Salary Reserve, it's a different motion on the agenda.
$16,900?
Okay, yeah. Transfer $16,900 from Salary Reserve to Department Budgets and Enterprise Funds as needed to cover the costs associated with the recently settled union agreement or take any other action relative there too. This motion is coming with positive recommendation, does not require a second, and this is to, there's a clerical union that has settled contracts for fiscal 2019, my understanding is fiscal, today they're out of contract again, but this is going back from fiscal 19, this is coming out of the Salary Reserve line, which we had, there is adequate money in there, and...
Any discussion on the motion?
Council President?
Yes.
I'm wondering, what is the percentage increase?
This is a 1.5% increase.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'm sorry.
You expect that out of Nick.
Yes, consistently.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call. We don't have to... We don't need a roll call on $16,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Number two.
Number two. Move that the town council vote to transfer $10,000 from Highway Personnel Line to Cemetery Personnel Line in preparation for June 30th, 2019 closing or take any other action relative there too. This also came out of Finance with a positive recommendation, this is more of a end-of-the-year moving thing, this was an item that, when we were doing the fiscal 2019 budget, somehow this line was shorter than this line was added, so it's just moving from the Personnel Line from the Highway to the Cemetery.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Under new business, fiscal year-end 2019 transfers.
Council President, yes, I have, my head... So I have a motion that the town council vote to modify the following general fund balances to facilitate the June 30th, 2019 closing of the fiscal 2019 year or take any other actions relative there too. And there are several items that we are taking money from to fund several items that are short. And the items that were, the funding sources would be the Town Council Reserve, $27,800, legal services from the Town Manager's Office of $10,000, legal services from the Town Attorney Line from $10,000, DPW Building Maintenance Personnel, 20,000, payments to veterans, 15,000, waste removal contracts, 21,798. And the budget destinations would be the Town Council stipend of 9,000, Town Council internal audit of 36,000, Administration and Finance Audit, 18,500, snow and ice manpower, 29,850, charter schools sending tuition, 1,000, fiscal 14, Derelict Properties, 7,75269, fiscal 19, Council on Aging Van Town Match, $95,000, and fiscal 17 Pest Control, $2,400. The total is 104,598.
Do you see...
I do have a different, and I think this motion is, I think the $15,000 instead of coming from payments from veterans should be coming from the GIC, so I just want to make that change. The total is 104,598. I would like to ask for emergency action on this, where we would like to close the books by the middle of July, and we are not meeting until August. So I would ask for an emergency motion on this.
I would make that motion. Motion's been made to move it, any discussion on the motion?
Is there, two members, is there any issues that are for public safety?
Are there any, no. No. Well, the emergency, I mean, we could have a special meeting. Last year, a meeting in July was the 17th, I believe, and we voted on it then, but this year, the meeting is today, and the next meeting is until August 13th.
I would argue that in the aggregate, if we had a, you know, we weren't able to balance the books, that that could potentially have a, an issue down the line with public safety. I think if looked precedent, we've made these emergency motions previously, and I, I would think that this would be in line with that.
Okay, motion has been made to move this question now. Any further discussion on the motion? Let's get a roll call.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cowell?
Yes.
Councilperson Christopher?
Yes.
Councilman Boncory?
No.
Councilman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lecanti?
Yes.
Vice President Wettieri?
Yes.
President Beckia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Your turn.
I don't know, this is a random secret question.
No, you can refer to...
Yeah. So also under new business, there is a motion to, that the council vote to transfer $35,000 from Salary Reserve to Police Department Budget to cover costs associated with the recent union agreement or take any other action relative there too. Is that...
Yes, that's the fire depart, the fire union.
Okay, because it says police. Again, unless it's a...
Shh. I'm just having... So I believe this was just a miscommunication, it's a typo, yeah.
It's the correct line, I apologize, that's a typo, it's the correct line, the title is Fire Union Base, and the account number in the body is the account number for the fire department.
So it's the wording, the verbiage is wrong.
It was just, yeah, it's a similar motion that was previously preferred by the police departments, that's, apologies, that's a typo.
Okay. So we're going to make that motion, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask that be referred to Finance.
Motion to main, to refer to Finance?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Now, can I ask, can I ask the town manager, does this mess you guys up?
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mess us up. We, just for due diligence, well, not due diligence, for the accommodation of the union, for coming to the table and making an agreement, although this was late in the fiscal year, they still did come and come to an agreement with us. I know our good firefighters are eagerly anticipating their retro checks that they would receive for this.
You know, this is public safety, and I'd like to rescind, take a vote to rescind that.
Motion's been made to rescind the last motion? Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Oh, there's a no.
One no.
And I would like to make the motion under an emergency act to transfer $35,000 from, from Salary Reserve to the Fire Department Budget to cover the costs associated with recent union agreement or take any other action relative there too.
Let a second on the motion.
This is fiscal 19.
That's correct.
Let a second on the motion.
Second.
And this is also a 1.5% increase.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion?
This is for public safety.
This is for public safety, and I would ask for a roll call vote.
While I'm walking out there on the street, so we don't...
Correct. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion, hearing none, let's take a roll call.
Councilor Ingman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cowell?
Yes.
Councilperson Christopher?
Yes.
Councilman Boncory?
Yes.
Councilman Marino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lecanti?
Yes.
Vice President Wettieri?
Yes.
President Beckia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All appointments? Yes. Council President? Yes. I'd like to make a motion that the town council accept the reappointment of Thomas Shipley.
Second.
Ask Constable for the town of Winthrop made by Town Council President or take any other action there too.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boncory, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
That the town council accept the appointment of Linda Cargill as the committee member on the Airport Hazards Committee for the town of Winthrop made by Town Council President Beckia, or take any other action there too.
A second.
Second has been made, any discussion on the motion on the appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Discussion, the first discussion under new business, item 7A, is non-binding refereeing questions for the November ballot. Counselor...
So I've been, you know, we have a lot going on in the town, and I thought with an election coming up now, I thought it would be a good idea, something we really haven't done in the past, and I think it's important that we get town sentiment on a lot of things. So I was looking at Mass General Law's Chapter 53, Article, Section 18A, and it discusses non-binding public opinion advisory question on local ballots. Now we have up until 35 days to have final language into the town clerk, but I think it would be very advantageous of us to discuss certain things, whether it be, Dottie had discussed earlier about the town versus kind of city mentality, even though technically we are a city by the chart, but looking at that small-town mentality, and, you know, there are talks of putting upwards of 1,000 units in this town, and I think that that's something that I would like to get the public sentiment on. I think the middle school side is something that I'd like to get the public sentiment on, the tennis courts, so we could finally either clean that area up and build out a good tennis court, or do as we had voted two years ago and make it parking, whatever it is, I'd like to get a concrete answer from the town, so we don't have a lot of this pickling. We're never going to agree on 100% on a lot of things, but I think it's very important to try to get as much public opinion and usable public opinion as we can. So I, I don't think this is something, obviously it's a new, new business, it's not going to be voted on or anything tonight, but I think it's something that I'd like to have on the discussion for the next meeting, and we can refer it out to a couple committees. Time is not on our side in a lot of this, but we have 35 days, so basically we would have to have this in by the end of, you know, the end of September, by our second meeting in September to vote on, that gives us one, two, three, three meetings. So if that's possible, I just think it's very important to try to get the public involved in a lot of these major decisions that we're going to be making.
Okay. Any comments from the council?
Just, I have a comment, one other question. Could we, had a question that came about banning marijuana, so it came to us in order to, rewrote the question, I guess it was sent to the complement page, and we're still waiting on we can have that response. But on any ballot question, when you put the question on the ballot, you have to put a pro and a con, and usually that's done by committees that are formed in the town, like there's usually a committee that identifies itself and incorporates or files a, something with the town clerk saying this is the committee that's for marijuana, and this is the committee that's against it, and they usually write the pro and the con that goes with the question that we write as a council. And that would be the same, I think, on any of those other questions, that you'd have to have some pro or con written to go along with each of the questions, and we still don't have it for the marijuana question.
I think those are more binding, I'm, I'm not sure, the way I read it, but what I'd like to do, I guess, if possible...
I think he's looking at, you're looking for visionary things.
Well, non-binding, and there's a specific section, I'd like to ask, maybe if we can have the town manager ask the town clerk to research it a little bit for us, but it's specifically in Chapter 53, Article, Section 18A, it doesn't talk about pro versus con, it's just a non-binding public opinion or advisory questions, just to try to get the sentiment and the, and the pulse of the public. And I don't, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if it's too late, but I'd like to look into it, because I, I'd like to see it done, so...
Any further discussion on...
I think the town manager has an answer for us.
I think it's a great idea to get input from the town and, and the pulse of the community when we're voting on issues. Another thing that's been suggested to me by numerous people is that we have a quarterly water bill, and if there's an issue that's coming up and we know what it's going to become on the table at some point, we could put a survey in to our water bill every quarter, and put that down, and people can react in that way, one way or another, when they send their payment in.
So, I neglected to talk about another item in my town manager's report, so Denise and I actually spoke with a company last week concerning agenda management and our management of our minutes and things like that, and in addition, they have a communications tool, because I have heard constituency concerning our outward-facing public communications. So we are looking to centralize our communications and...
Can you speak up, please?
Sure, we're looking to centralize our communications through one platform, so everything comes out the same way from our town, instead of having each department send out their own individual things and not losing oversight with it. With that, we've also been engaging on, how do we, exactly this, gauge public opinion on things, and how do we get input? So the assistant town manager has actually been engaging with a company, I can't think of it off the top of my head right now, but they provide us with essentially scientific results of any survey that we do, and there's multiple ways we can put out the survey through this company, and it comes at a small cost to the town, but we would be able to survey the town multiple times per year on different topics, and we can get down to very granular levels of data with it. So it is something that if you want to put something on the ballot, and that is a process to pursue, because it deals with coordinating with the state and things like that, and getting it on the printed ballots, or I am consistently looking for solutions that can alleviate some of the pressures on us and how we interact with the public, because just in the conversation tonight, many times it comes up that people feel like they have not been able to engage in the process correctly, and I want to, I've said this previously, I am committed to providing a higher level of transparency in this town, and whatever resources we can put towards that, I think will benefit the town, so we can work towards building consensus on things, and work towards allowing people to advocate for their interests, not just within your meetings, but also through different forms of communication as well. So it's something that I can inspire with, with the clerk, concerning getting something on the ballot, but we are also looking for other solutions as well to alleviate these concerns.
Okay, any further discussion on this particular subject?
Well, Council President, getting back to the discussion here, I'm a little confused, what is the motion on the table, what are we considering here?
It's not a motion, it's just a discussion to see if the possibility, I mean, you know, the town clerk, I guess technically is our employee, I could reach out to her and ask her to do some more research on this, but just to get the pulse of it, is it worth seeing if it's feasible in a relatively short period of time to get some public opinion questions out there on things that, you know, we could, I'm not stating these are the things we have to ask about, I'm just saying that we could discuss them and come up with a couple of questions, if it's five or six questions that we could put on a ballot that's non-binding, just to get the pulse of the community.
Okay, we'll have that on our next agenda. The marijuana ballot question, where does that all stand?
We, as, rules in order, we're set to rules in order to move the question.
KP, has KP responded?
I believe that they have responded, but I will inquire with them after this meeting and figure out what their opinion is concerning...
Now, how does, how does Phil's scenario work?
With the pro and the con, yeah. Because usually there are committees that form for a question that's a major question like this, and they write the pro and the con, the town doesn't do that part of it.
Yeah, so the, the town would not be writing pro or con in this. I think this is an opportunity because of timing that we could, I would open it up to the public submitting information, either pro or con. I have been in public meetings where people have expressed these opinions pretty eloquently, and I think that...
I will suspend the...
I think, go, go with the real meetings right there.
I'll suspend the rules, Dottie, would you like to, I'll suspend the rules right now. Would you like to speak regarding this, because I believe you had a lot of questions relative to the question, ballot question?
I want it.
Okay, I'm going to address, first of all, I'd like to address the town manager, if I'm going to address, first of all, I'd like to address the town manager, if I may, through the chair. I've listened to the studies and the charrette study, the study, and we're up to five that we're going to go out and outsource and pay for. We have tax bills, water bills, we have mass mailings that go around our community. Is there no reason why you can't put a public opinion survey in those mailings without going through the expense of quote-unquote "an outside company" that has to give a summary and a report? I mean, we have very capable people that can read these, you know, when they get back in the town and make a very clear assessment. Wouldn't that be a good starting point, rather than continue to spend small amounts of money here, represent larger monies out there? And I've heard five presentations tonight about, we'll hire this, we're going to get that, we're going to go over here, we're going to go over there. I don't know whether or not that's feasible, if you're looking for an opinion poll. I think it would be very, it would be who the saving, if you would take and utilize the mass mailings that we already do, especially now, too, we're working on the census, we have a cleaner bill of health as to whom is residing in Winthrop.
So my only concern with mass mailings, as I've dealt with this previously, is we have renters, we're not engaging with them, so we're losing out on their opinion. Also, within my office, I'm not sure who I would task with being involved, being in charge of a survey.
What about some of these high school students that wanted to want? And engage them and let them get involved in government process. And as far as the renters go, you can publicly put in and make it known, and advantageous to them if they would like to participate as a renter. There's very, very easy ways to drop off leaflets, like you could drop it to us at Ford Heath, Seal Harbor, any of the apartment buildings. You can drop off notices and let them know that if they choose, they can so be a part of this survey in the town. There is no reason why we have to engage companies all the time. We have resources right here in town.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just looking for a level of professionalism that I am now positive we could provide within the town for the results--
Dottie, let's keep this to the marijuana question.
All right. Like, I'd like to address the marijuana subject, if I may.
Thank you.
Okay? We're talking the marijuana retail store. I'm going to start off with it currently stands for the state tax, exercise tax is coming in at 10.75%. The state standard sales tax is coming in at 6.25. The combination right now of the state combined taxation is presently 17%. The Massachusetts Cannibal Control Commission has indicated that this state tax will soon be increased, based on the reported sales return, giving the profile of fiscal 219 to 220. The town of Winthrop had two options, to outright ban the establishment of a recreational marijuana store, or to move the December 2018 Town Council moratorium to a ballot question come November 2019. The wording on the citizen petition that was submitted was seeking to ban outright. The wording was very clear, very precise. Am I bothering you, Mr. Boncorry?
No.
Oh, okay.
What I--
The wording was very clear and precise, as with other communities. Over 50 communities have elected to ban and establish outright, either with the 2016 state ballot question or within their own governing powers. There is one argument that we hear that a marijuana retail shop will, and her additional revenue brings to the town, is the saving grace for the town's budgetary shop vaults. We disagree. The state allowed a maximum taxation for cities and towns, it's called the local option tax. The city or town cannot exceed the local option taxation of a maximum of 3%. Excuse me. I have a turn. Let's go up here. I apologize. From the local tax revenue, the monies the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission requires, under their statutes, that the community set aside funds to establish a safety medical usage bond program. We know the hours of operation would require a police detail in the salary range of 60,000 plus. We believe the medical and usage program required would, and could involve an additional salaried employee. I ask you, a revenue return for Winthrop is where? Is it worth the additional impact on our community, when all around us, other communities have establishments underway for those who choose to partake? It's a proven fact that marijuana has its most serious damage while the brain is still developing from the ages of 1 through 25. Of most concern is that, once the damage is done, it remains permanent. The medical profession tests also to seeking greater problems, they find in the 30- to 40-year-old range with pot-smoking history, they have greater problems in cognitive challenges. I would ask you, is it worth the risk? We're seeking the wording on the November ballot that clearly and directly states a choice, either no or yes, and not to exacerbate, as was displayed at the Rules and Ordinance Committee meeting, and their draft choice of distraction and needless lengthy wording that was not found in many other communities. I would hope that both the counselor, LaConti, and Boncorry would recuse themselves in a final decision around wording on the ballot. I also have included, when I passed this out to you, the Cannabis Control Commission, I've been in touch with them, I gave you the phone number, and the Massachusetts City or Town Government Resource Center, which helps communities, there's the phone number and the fax numbers on your documentation. We gave you a very brief wording on that petition, it was very clear. Our town manager worked very closely with us on that. We would ask you to take a look at that. We don't want that question to be thrown up against the board or the wall, so when it comes down, it's so confusing, people will go in. And the positioning is very important, too. The moratorium was for no. The petition was for ban. So let's put that first and foremost, that we say no.
Thank you. Anybody wish, Council, we should--
As we pass the motion here--
Pardon me?
We only have one option. The only option is to ban it or not ban it. And that's the ballot question, is to ban it or ban it. The question is, I know you're for banning it, so--
No, 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 I'm not going to engage you in an argument. I'd ask you to take that telephone number and call that number for cities and towns, they'll advise you, as working with Marham Healy, they'll advise you as to how you can properly word that, as many other communities have.
Okay. It's not an argument, and I wasn't looking for an argument, and I don't want an argument. What I want to know is, if you, and the people that you are with, that are for the ban, can get together and write the pro question--
We did, and we submitted it to you.
No, but there's got to be a, the pro reasoning for passing it.
We submitted that to you at your committee meeting. We submitted that to you at your committee meeting, and it was that was very, very, very discouraging, rude manner, of which I walked out of that meeting because of the fact there was no, no community cooperation going on whatsoever. Okay? I and another person walked out on my committee, because your responsibility, as Rules and Ordinance, is to turn around and research, and be able to come up with as close a finding that is conducive to the question and to the public and the community at large. Not interpretation, not this lengthy, so it gets camouflaged. It's right out there, yes or no.
The question was not lengthy, and it was research. What we need is a pro argument and a con argument, and I want to know who's going to--
I'm sorry, Council President, is there a motion on the table right now? What are we debating? What's going on here?
This is just a, this is just a discussion, there's no--
It's a discussion, we still have to get someone--
And I'll call on you in a second.
Who's qualified to write the pro and the con. And you can write the pro, but I think you have to register with the clerk to be able to do that, or someone on your committee.
You don't have to register that.
Dottie. The question is gone for review by legal. But the counselor is telling you--
Question's been in review by legal since July--
Okay.
--of last year. Compliment pages, have that question.
Okay. He's telling you what else has to go on the ballot question, the pros and the cons. If you have a committee that has something to say about it, then I would draft it and submit it--
We did that. We don't know who's in favor of it. If there's a committee that's in favor of it, have they stepped forward? Have they drafted anything? Have they made a recommendation?
No, they couldn't ask you.
I don't know. All I know is that we've taken proper action.
Just a quick question. When you say pro and con, do you just mean a yes vote would do this?
Yes, and a no vote would do this.
Okay, so a yes vote would, would ban the establishment of a marijuana facility, and a no vote would enable? Is that what you mean?
Those are essentially opinion pieces when it's put onto the ballot itself. So it's basically, here's what the question is, here's an argument in favor of it, and here's an argument against it, essentially.
The question, if he says that, yes or no, what it means. It's the pro and con that you have to put with it.
It can be cited to the committee, or it can be cited to--
Councilor Con.
Well, I don't really know what to say here, because I don't really know what we're talking about, so I'll just kind of wait for a motion to be on the table, and we can discuss it.
There's no motion, Counselor. We're having a discussion on it, an update. Hopefully, at the next meeting, can we have the question?
Absolutely.
Available at the next council meeting.
When I respectfully through the chair, would I ask if I could have a copy of that?
It'll be public--
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the next item. The location or relocating the Parks and Rec building, or office, I should say, in facility. That was requested by one of our residents. We can discuss it. I think it's going to have to go to capital assets and finance, but I'll get some guidance from the council.
Jim, I'm sure--
I would make that motion, and I'm glad we're taking this up, and I think it's, you know, not the locate, to me, it's not, and I believe when Karen Jobs was asked this question, it's not just the location of the office, it's the location of the facility itself. Where are they going to run their activities? They need a permanent home. It's much a disservice to the, to the parents who are, you know, they go into the back door of an old, older building that doesn't have the services it really should have, and Sean's doing yeoman's work with not great equipment. You know, you have to have the proper tools in the bag, too, to perform the function, you just don't need, you know, the ability to do it, you need the tools to help you do it. And I don't think we've been doing Parks and Rec a good service over the last couple of years. So I think it's very important that, I would make a motion to move it to capital assets and finance, because it also, it obviously involves an asset, and it obviously involves money to do it, but--
We have a second on the motion? Second on the motion?
I'll second this.
A second by Counselor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment? Yes, Dottie?
Very briefly, again, Dawn and Riley, precing by. First of all, I'd like to thank Counselor Luttey for clarifying the fact that on January 15 of this year, three members reached themselves, it wasn't just Counselor Boncorry who voted no. And I appreciate that clarification. The other thing I thought of is, just as a resource, WCAT was at the appeals board meeting on June 27, 19, and Kurt was the video person at that time. So I don't know, we even want to look into real detail about how it--
I watched the twice.
--being transpired and what was used as evidence to turn the property into partial residential and partial business. CAT does that information on the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deb?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I was at a planning board meeting, I believe it was the last planning board meeting, and there was some discussion between members of the audience and members of the town council that, that different committees or boards were not supposed to comment at a board of appeals or a planning board meeting. And yet, Mr. Boncorry commented that, in his opinion, all the one and two family homes, at the planning board meeting, he commented that all of one and two family homes were in a residential district. And yet, now, we're not supposed to comment, or you are not supposed to comment? I think confusion benefits the developers. There's been a lot of confusion going back and forth about ordinances, a lot of confusion about where the lines are drawn, and with this confusion, we still haven't got an opinion from the planning board. The planning board asked the assistant manager, the woman from Copeland Page, and the man that drew the map that has all the fuzzy lines, the planning board asked for those three individuals to come up with a plan to present to the planning board, so they can make a recommendation to you. How more confusing can a situation get? Somebody can comment, somebody cannot comment. You know, I'd like some clarification on that. Can somebody just decide to comment and go against what was just discussed here? I think the confusion benefited the developer. I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be here? Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Comment on a different topic. I understand Jim's theory of what Jim started about ballot questions and so forth, but I think we really understand that we developed a form of government that said, we're going to go from a 270-person legislative body to a nine-legislative body. While we were doing that, I was on the charter commission at the time with Counselor Luttey, Counselor Boncorry, and six other fine citizens. We, we had a consultant, and they would throw an awful lot of literature on various forms of government, theories of how local government should work, and one of the, this was, if you have a smaller group, they're going to be more engaged, they're going to look into matters in depth, they're going to spend time, they're going to deliberate, and you're going to use your committee systems to do it, and I think that's, that's working. I don't think that you want to, that you necessarily should be, I think if you go to these kinds of questions, you should do it in a limited kind of fashion. There was a notice, it was a few of the years, like, every, once in a while, I get reminded how old I am, because I see my name back in various periods of time. So 40 years ago, we had a question about a licensing and carnival for the American Legion, and the American Legion members came in and said they needed the carnival, they had done it in the past, it was a major fundraiser for, which creates some financial hardships. Then we heard from the neighbors, I don't think Jim was living on Brookfield Road, but a lot of people were still living there, who I--
You would have been there.
Most of whom I knew, and some of them were very close friends of my parents, that talked about what it was like living next to the carnival, or those members of this, and the uproar that was there. I won't go into the details, but the carnival and the carnival workers were not people you'd want to have camped out across the street from you with five magazines. So we decided to, we decided to vote with the members, with the residents. The Board of Selectment changed, there were two new members, Odile being one, but another person came in, and another member of the Board of Selectment, two years later, at the town meeting, said he wanted a public referendum on the question of carnival licenses, because it was a difficult and emotional decision. And I got up and I was, I said, you know, I was on the Board of Selectment for six years, we made difficult decisions on a weekly basis. Said, I don't think we need to come back and say, here's a decision we're having a hard time with, we got a plant, and throw it on a ballot question. That's not the way we should work. So I, I understand what Jim's trying to do, and I appreciate his effort, but I would do it in a very limited fashion, and understanding that we've elected you for a purpose, to evaluate things and do it for us. And I don't think that you can push aside any of the issues that you're thinking about and put it on a ballot question, or a survey, or stuff things in water bills, or whatever fashion something does, that come up with some kind of a survey. That's not the way we set up the system, and I think we might continue the way we set it up. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to be here?
Yeah, Bill Schmidt, precing by five. I just want to echo what Tom has said, because, you know, a few years ago, you look at ballot questions, people don't want to increase the tax, the gas tax, but they want to fix the roads. And so I think oftentimes, ballot questions are too simplistic, and there are complicated issues here, how are you trying to solve things? I think that, as Tom has said, we have faith in you having the time to study the issues in detail, so I just want to caution you on that.
Anyone else wish to be here? Yes.
Just like, first of all, congratulate Rob DeMichael as the new council member. I want you to really read that oath that you take as a councilor, several times, and underline key words in there. And remember one other thing, you are going to be covering meetings, and a lot of us are not going to be here. But you have, if I do share the responsibility to represent us in the best form we can, and take everything you hear from the public and your constituents-- and your constituents and bring to the table for us. Second of all, I'd like to congratulate the council for the certificate you gave a couple of weeks ago to the Parks and Recs Department, the basketball boys and girls teams. I just want to make a comment on Sean Driscoll, he's done a fantastic job at Parks and Recs. That gymnasium is a valuable, valuable asset to our town. Without that gymnasium, we would have kids out in the streets. I go to other communities, Danvers, I go to the sports place there, they have six basketball courts in one area, and the town is probably 23 from what I was told, six at Danvers High School. So we are really, in a lot of ways, as far as recreational facilities goes, we're really behind the eight ball on that, so I want to just compliment, Sean does a great job. He's there morning, noon, and night. He is completely dedicated to the youth of Winthrop, and I hope the council backs him in any way possible. The next thing I just want to say as a resident is, you know, obviously, we're going to have development, and I just want to make sure that when the infrastructure starts next year, or whenever it starts, that every safety precaution that can be possibly taken, be taken. We saw what happened up in Andover, and the disaster with the gas lines. I have some very serious concerns with the center area and the entire center, going from Pauling Street to Somerset to Cottage Park, or the Butler Road to Woodside after apartment, that every single area there, we really have to be vigilant about safety, and that's what I'm getting back from all my neighbors, because my neighbors talk to me, as you all know. And the concern level has to be at the highest level. I hope, as Councilor Leteri spoke earlier, about safety or commissioner of safety or whatnot, that every single day, or the precautions that have to take place, take place. This is very, very, very important, because if something goes wrong down there, it will be a catastrophe. We are building in a very congested, small area. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Karen.
Karen Jobs, pre-sentive two. I don't think anybody at the table needs to know what I think about the ferry. I'm sure they do know, but I don't know that the town manager knows too, as I've expressed my concerns.
Loud and clear.
I hope now that you will sit back, and I, I believe that the town manager is trying very hard to get us out of the ferry business. I'm not going to dispute the need for the ferry or the people that use the ferry, but I'm just disputing the fact that Winthrop should not be in the ferry business. We don't know how to do it, none of us do, and that includes any of you at the table, I'm sure, and I don't care how much body experience you have. You have a motor that's down now, that, there isn't even a part available in the United States. That, that's unbelievable. It has to come from overseas? I don't understand that. It's too bad General Ship wasn't still at East Boston, because they would probably fix that ferry tomorrow, and again, I'm dating myself. The other thing is, I certainly hope that when the question goes on the ballot in November for marijuana, it is not as confusing as this discussion has been tonight. There's either a yes or a no, a pro or a con. Yes, you want something in Winthrop Center that sells marijuana, or you don't want something in Winthrop Center. That's the pro, that's the con. There's no in-between. There's no cheapest, if we don't have it in Winthrop, we're not going to get that, what is it, 3%? Is that what you said, Tony?
The maximum is 3%.
Whatever, you're going to get.
Maximum is 3%.
But what do you have, the traffic? The town manager now tells you what the traffic is coming into Winthrop, going out of Winthrop, as he's coming into Winthrop. There's going to be the same coming into Winthrop for these people buying the marijuana, and I don't just, you know, anybody who wants to buy it, fine. I just don't want it in my backyard.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
First, I just want, I remember the carnival 43 years ago, I went. As a 15-year-old kid, I had a blast, but now if I owned it next door, I probably wouldn't want it.
You weren't having one, see that?
You're around drinking with a... We did not, I, I know we discussed, but we did not, and I don't know if we need a vote, but we had mentioned the possibility of asking the Board of Appeals and Building Commissioner to come here at the next meeting. I don't know if that's something...
Do you want to take a vote on it, or do you just want me to pursue it?
I would like you just to pursue it.
Okay.
And I just want to wish everybody happy and healthy fourth, and it's, it's one of the best times, if not the best time in Winthrop, so enjoy it.
And before I close it out, anybody else I could...
Remember, it's the response.
No, no. Couple announcements, the Horace Parade, we know, is at 9 o'clock on 4th of July. Point Charlie will be closed at 6 o'clock on July 4th evening. The fireworks, I think you mentioned they go off, what time they go off. On July 9, at 6 o'clock, the Public Works Dog Park Discussion at the Harvard Hearing Room.
Actually, Council President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but because of a lack of quorum, we'll need to postpone that meeting. I'll get back with a reschedule as soon as possible.
Okay, Nick, thank you very much. July 15, the planning board meeting has changed from July 8 to discuss the ever-popular zoning maps. So that's going to be July 15. And July 27 is the Family Day at Euro Beach from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. A motion to adjourn?
I just have one question. What did happen to the Harbor Day? Does that, that just out there?
Because it was, we're going to probably do it in the fall because of the rain. The rain dates now, it's getting too warm, there's too much traffic on the, you know, the public landing, so we're going to move it to the fall.
I love the third day, just in looking tentative on September 21st.
What's the date, the 10th?
September 21st.
September 21st? September 21st? On I'm a...
Tentative.
Tentative. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Would I ask for a question?
It's happy 4th of July.